Good afternoon, we're convening the Joint Committees on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, and Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs on our 3:01 PM agenda here in Conference Room 224. We have a handful of bills and resolutions up this afternoon, beginning with HB 118 relating to traffic fines. Testifying first on HB 118 is the State Department of Transportation. Thank you. Up next is, oh, excuse me, Maui County Councilmember Alice Lee in support, Hawaii State Association of Counties in support, and one individual in opposition. That's all the testimony we have on this measure this afternoon. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Good afternoon. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the TCA Committee, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. Oh, this is not HB 541.
No, this is HB 118. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on 118? If not, are there any questions? If not, alright, thank you. Let's move on to the next measure, HB... Oh, I'm sorry. One question for DOT. So, sorry. Under the measure, assuming we're receiving authority to the counties to, let's say, stop people from stopping or standing on a highway somewhere, if DOT has granted authority from federal highways to, let's say, shut it down for an event or some sort of whatever reason, does that automatically, under this bill, supersede the county penalties or other things that may be otherwise authorized to enforce?
It may, so I need to get back to you on that. It may supersede it.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, further questions? If not, alright, thank you everybody. Let's move on to HB 1109 relating to commercial driver licensing. Testifying first on 1109 is the Department of Transportation. Thank you. That's all the testimony we have on 1109. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? If not, are there questions? If not, alright, thank you. Moving on to our resolutions on the agenda, we have SCR 100 and SR 110, requesting the State Foundation of Culture and Arts to collaborate with the Office of Veteran Services to plan and construct memorials to honor the sacrifices and contributions of veterans from Hawaii. Testifying first on both these, which we'll take together, is the State Foundation. Good afternoon.
Chairs, members of the committee, State Foundation, Culture and the Arts stands on our comments and would like to add that we have a good working relationship with the Department of Veterans Affairs and Colonel Hahn, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that were being reported.
Thank you. Up next is the State Office of Veteran Services.
Thank you so much, Chair Lee, Chair Wakai, Vice Chairs, respected members of the committees. We stand in strong support of this resolution and look forward to working with Karen Yew and the State Culture and the Arts folks. They've got a great reputation, and this is long overdue for our Gulf War and our global war on terrorism veterans. So, thank you so much for introducing this measure.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Up next is the Department of Defense in support, and one individual in support. That's all the written testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Committees, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. So, this resolution is requesting the State Foundation of Culture and Arts to collaborate and cooperate with the Office of Veteran Services to plan and construct memorials to honor the sacrifices and contributions of veterans from Hawaii. We just wanted to provide comments because CARES were developing like an after-school art program, and we were a part of the Parks and Recreation, so a Day for Memorial Day art contest and competition. And the way that they kind of created an educational environment about, like, you know, something of a dark, this is kind of like a dark subject matter, but then they kind of made it fun because it was to create an art competition for children. So, perhaps this is an idea that the State Foundation can also replicate. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. That is all the... Or is there anyone else on this measure, these measures? Alright, if not, questions? Chair.
For the Art Foundation, Culture and the Arts.
Hi.
You mentioned you have a good working relationship with the veterans organizations. He pointed to the projects where you worked on projects and how they evolved.
Yeah, sure. We just recently dedicated Filipino Veterans of World War II Monument at Waipahu Library. We worked very closely with Colonel Hahn, who helps us pull together the Art Advisory Committee to decide what they want from that. Currently, we're also, we're doing a work of art, incorporating a work of art at the Veterans Home in Kapolei, and the military is heavily involved in that as well, veterans there, as I should say. In the past, I know that we've done task forces, Colonel Hahn can speak to that, with the Global War on Terror Monument. That didn't move forward. I wasn't there at the time, but it didn't move forward, but we'd be happy to do that again with them. So, we love, we appreciate working with them. Like, as in my testimony, we were talking about arts and healing with the veterans. That was an initiative that I know my predecessor was working with Colonel Hahn on, maybe not just honoring the veterans of the past, but also the active military and veterans now that could use help through healing, through the arts, arts activation, through dance and drama and arts, visual arts. Does that answer your question?
No, no, thank you, because I wasn't aware of that partnerships that you've had with them, so I'm happy to hear about that.
Yeah, I'm really, we really respect each other's efforts, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions? If not, thank you everyone. Let's move on to the next set of measures. SCR 193 and SR 198 requesting the City of County Honolulu to improve and widen the Ka'au Beach Park parking lot to make it suitable to service a turnaround point for public bus transportation. And testifying first is Tony Catman in support. We have Thomas Licos with comments. That's all the testimony we have. Oh, I'm sorry. And also Eva Marie Nosal in support. That's all the testimony we have. Is there anyone here wishing to testify on these measures? If not, since there's no questions left, that is the end of the resos, that is the TCA lead. So, let me turn it over to my esteemed colleague for the rest.
Thank you. We're gonna now contemplate two resolutions, SCR 150 and SR 146. And on our testifiers list, we have... These two resos are so phenomenal, there's no testimony for them. So, we will need to move on to the last measure on this agenda, that is SCR 164. And for this one, we have one piece of testimony. Yes. Is there anyone here from the Taiwanese government, the Taipei Economic Cultural Office in Honolulu? Members, they have submitted testimony in support of this measure. Unfortunately, there's no one for us to ask questions of, so we will take a brief recess prior to taking a vote on all of the measures.
Thank you. We're reconvening the Committees on Transportation, Culture and the Arts, and Public Safety, Intergovernmental and Military Affairs for decision-making on our 3:01 PM agenda. Up first is HB 118 relating to traffic fines. Chair, so having conferred, recommendation is to move this forward. We'd just like to make some amendments to address, I think, the potential conflict. So, we would amend the bill to say that if the federal or state governments authorize closures of highways for events or other reasons, that shall supersede the county penalties and other things that this bill would authorize them to adopt for that period of time. Any discussion? Questions? If not, Acting Vice Chair.
Members, HB 118, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair Inoue is excused. Senator Elefante.
Aye.
I vote aye, Senator Awa.
Oh.
Recommendation adopted.
For members of PSM, the same recommendation, to pass this measure out with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 118 with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga is excused. Senator McKelvey is excused. Senator Awa.
No.
Mr. Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HB 1109, HD2 relating to commercial driver licensing. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion?
Members passing unamended with four members present. Are there any reservations? Any names? Seeing none, recommendation adopted.
For PSM members, same recommendation to pass this measure out as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, with three members present from PSM, any no votes? Any votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to SCR 100 and SR 110, requesting State Foundation to collaborate on veterans monuments. Like to recommend passing this forward as is. Any discussion? If not? Vice Chair.
Members passing unamended with four members present. Are there any reservations? Any no votes? Recommendation adopted.
For PSM members, same recommendation on these two resolutions, to pass them both as they are. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes on both measures.
Okay, with three members present from PSM, any no votes? Any votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thanks. Moving on to SCR 193, SR 198, requesting City of County to do some stuff out on the Hawaiiania Coast and improve things. We'd like to move this forward by making a couple amendments based on some of the testimony. So, we'd like to just change the rezo to ask the city to move the bus turnaround off of Macau Street to either Ka'au Beach Park or the surrounding area, as may be appropriate. Any discussion? If not, take a vote.
Members passing with amendments. With four members present, are there any reservations? Any no votes? Recommendation adopted.
For PSM members, same recommendation on these two resolutions. Any discussion?
With amendments, yeah.
With amendments.
Yep.
Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, with the three members present from PSM, any no votes? Any votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendation is adopted.
On the next two resolutions, SCR 150 and SR 146, this is to meet the growing needs of EV vehicles and have redesigned license plates to meet that need. The Chairs have conferred, and we'd like to pass this measure out, or these two resolutions out as they are. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, with three members present from PSM, any no votes? No vote for Senator Awa. Mr. Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. TCA, same recommendation.
Members passing unamended. With four members present, are there any reservations? Any no votes? Recommendation adopted.
On the last resolution, that is Senate Concreted Resolution 164, the two Chairs have conferred on this resolution that supports our friends from Taiwan, and would like to pass this measure out as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, with three members present, any no votes? No vote for Senator Awa. Mr. Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. TCA, same recommendation. Oh, yeah, as is.
As is. Members passing unamended. With four members present, are there any reservations? Any no votes? So noted. Recommendation adopted.
Thank you. That is the end of our agenda. We are adjourned.
Calling the 3:05 calendar, Joint Hearing for Health Human Services and Transportation, Culture and the Arts. Present with me are myself, Vice Chair Henry, Senator Pinot, Senator Awa, Senator Moriwaki. And for TCA, we have?
Um, yes. Myself, Senator Kehu Kulele, and Awa.
Okay, thank you very much. So, first up, for HB 415, Making Appropriation to Implement the Recommendation of the Task Force on Mobility Management Established pursuant to Act 214, Sessions Laws 2013. First up, we have State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support.
Yes, long term, our task force, you did.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have State Department of Trans... You know, excuse me. I need to talk about my script, sorry. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing, due to technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business 3:05 PM Thursday, March 23rd, Room 224, and video via video conferences. For those on Zoom, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Each testify will have one minute to testify. If there's a technical glitch during your time to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. I will be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislator's website. You will find a link on the site for the measure. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the Committee does have your written testimony, and I encourage you to use your time to either add additional comments or stand on your written testimony. So, let's go back to HB 415, Making an Appropriation. State Council on Developmental Disabilities is standing in support and standing based on your written testimony. Next, we have State Department of Transportation providing comments. Ed Snepin, are you present? Okay, next, we have Kirby Shaw of Dcap in support. Audrey Suga Nakagawa of ARP in support. Are you present? Please proceed.
Chris Suda Nakagawa of ARP, we stand in strong support of her testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Donald Sakamoto testifying for National Federation of the Blind of Hawaii in support. Louis Erchak, Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support. Pamela Eaton, Maui Metropolitan Planning Organization in support. James Cashell, National Federation of the Blind of Hawaii in support. Oahu Metropolitan, and PO, Metropolitan Planning Organization in support. Tabitha Mitchell in support. Tabitha, are you present?
I am standing on my written testimony, but I do need to say that I made a mistake.
Would you like to say so on the mic?
Okay.
Please identify yourself.
Tabitha Mitchell, and I stand on my written testimony, but I do need to say that I made a mistake as I was editing it on my phone in the little bitty boxes, and it states no public transportation in two different places, and that is supposed to say very limited public transportation.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have three other individuals in support. Anybody else wishing to testify? HB 415, come on up, Angela.
Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support of appropriating funds for this subject matter. So, it looks like there was a report from the statewide mobility management report from 2015, the State of Hawaii Department of Health Executive Office of Aging, and it does conclude that to address mobility needs of the Hawaiis, Kapunas, and disabled people, they have to also address the transit operations, increasing number of people who are using transit, and then also the need for timely and reliable travel. So, because these are very necessary initiatives to address, it is good to appropriate funds for this subject matter, so thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on HB 415? Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. HB 794 relating to disability awareness. First up, we have State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support.
Of course, and our testimony.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support. Kirby Shaw, Dcap in support. Taipei Betts Department of Human Services in support. Louis Erchak, Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support. Gary Simon, Hawaii Family Caregiver Coalition in support. Seven other individuals in support. Anybody else wishing to testify? HB 794. Come on up, Angela, and please identify yourself. You have one minute.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chairs, and the Committee, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support. So, HB 794 is to designate the month of October as Disability Awareness Month, and because the state is so sensitive to, you know, disability rights, this is just such an appropriate measure. And to kind of tell you a little bit about ADA provisions, the Federal Act, it does go into some of the... Okay, so the ADA explains that if disability rights is implemented correctly, and if parameters are legislated appropriately for disabled people, then there should be certain results achieved, right? So, disabled people will have a overall sense of well-being.
Angela?
You're done. Sorry. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on HB 794? Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. HB 1201 relating to noise pollution. First up, Department of Health providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the Committee. Name is Sean Haruna with the Department of Health, Noise Section. We stand on our written testimony and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Department of Transportation providing comments. Ed. Oh, right here. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Attorney General in opposition, Wade Hargrove. Are you present on Zoom or are you present in person?
Good afternoon, Chair, Senator Ventura, and Chair Lee, and members of the Committee. My name is Wade Hargrove. I'm a Deputy Attorney General. I'm here for the Attorney General's Office, and I'm here to offer testimony in opposition to the measure, the basis that opposition is... Excuse me, the simple reason that it is preempted by federal law. Preemption is unusually clear in this matter. In addition to the plain language, the plain meaning of the Federal Act that controls, it's Federal Aviation Act. There's also a unusually, and I say unusually because courts only hear what they get, this is an unusually robust amount of cases that have heard, so the case history is thorough. This issue has come up in a bunch of different ways, and so there's a lot of case law. A lot of judges have been ruled on the question of how can municipalities, how can state legislatures legislate this area? And basically, they shot down, certainly as it applies in this case, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. But just quickly, there are two things that have come up in previous committee hearings, I think, that might be of interest to you.
Okay, we read your written testimony.
Yeah, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, next up, we have Hawaii Helicopter Association, International AOPA in opposition, and we have one other individual in support. Anybody else wishing to testify? HB 1201. Members, any questions? Okay, Senator Moriwaki.
I'd like to call the AG back up. So, you... Hi, I'm Wade.
How are you, Senator?
So, can you tell us if there's any way to correct this? Because we've been having complaints upon complaints of helicopter noise, and is there any way to cure this bill so that we can, in fact, regulate in some way the noise and other accidents that we've had with helicopters?
Certainly, I certainly appreciate the concern and the concern of residents other than Hawaii, so we all are familiar with the sound of helicopters and overflights. I would say simply this, I don't know whether there is or is not a way. I will say that a lot of different municipalities and state legislatures have tried. Most recently, the governor of New York has just, you know, a measure that was seeking to address noise from aircraft. One of the things that has been discussed is the question of can you separate the noise, Department of Health regulating noise apart from aircraft? The problem is the exclusivity that the federal government has in this regulatory space is wide and far-reaching, and you just, as a physical property of aircraft and travel through airspace, you can't separate the noise from the vehicle. So, if you say, "I've gotta have less noise", that inherently means a diversion of the aircraft away from the area that is being disturbed. That would be the solution, and that might be what you were looking at thinking. The problem is that's not just regulating the noise, it's, in fact, regulating the flight path and technically, the operation of the vehicle. The other thing that's come up is the question of the private right of action that's created in this measure, which has been described as clever, I agree. It's a kind of a different way to get at the problem or solving the problem, rather than giving the agency in the executive branch the obligation of the enforcement, although this measure provides DOH that enforcement authority, also gives individuals a private right of action. Courts, which is, in all likelihood, though there's no certainty, but in all likelihood, based on the courts, cases that we've seen, would not entertain that measure. Measures effectiveness would say that that person's claim of right is avoided.
Just one more question, and do you see, we've done it with vehicles, that, you know, we're trying to get EVs, we're trying to get ways in which we can curtail the installation of noisy mufflers. Is there any way on the equipment side of it that we can regulate it, not when they're flying in airspace, but, you know, higher?
That is a great question, because that avoids diversion of flight path, right? Diversion of aircraft, changing flight path, which FAA obviously has exclusive authority over. Unfortunately, though, the aircraft, the maintenance, the safety, presumably also the exhaust, whatever it is, the engine noise itself, that's just mechanical, that is also regulated by the federal government physically.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, Senator Kehu Kulele.
Thank you. Can you expound on the reasoning behind why a private right of action, why the private right of action portion of this measure would be, I'm assuming, preempted?
Right, and granted, this is, this is an extrapolation. This is based on what has happened in other similar circumstances where private rights of action have been in, you know, contradiction of what federal law allows. What would likely happen, and again, this is prediction, but it's based on the cases on this issue, would likely happen is the court that is hearing that case, so someone files a complaint, a civil action, it initiates that judicial proceeding. Very soon after, whomever is the defendant in that matter would, in all likelihood, file a motion to dismiss that matter on the basis that the court does not have jurisdiction to hear it because the cause of action itself, the effort by the plaintiff in that matter to cause the noise, to abate, the defendant to change either the flight path, the equipment, anything in the nature of the operation of the vehicle that they're operating that's causing the noise, the court would say, "Can't do it", and again, in all likelihood, the, that case would just be dismissed.
So, the... I acknowledge that, but that does not sound like, to me, the basis to invalidate the statute itself if enacted.
Yeah, I mean, um... It's, I guess that's, that's one way to look at it.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Just one.
Thank you.
While you're here, there's, other than the great number of restrictions and limited window of authority the state has to regulate, is there anything that prohibits the state, for example, from following what other states have already done and redesignated certain airports or things like that as vertports or other designations that do not carry the same FAA authority and restriction? And re-designated certain airports or things like that as vertports or other designations that do not carry the same FAA authority and restriction?
Well, you, you, you are actually identifying, um, uh, quite presciently the, the exemption to this preemption that we're talking about where the state operates, where itself operates, um, an airport or an air terminal or an air, um, hub, if you will. So as the owner and operator of an airport, the state may regulate that airspace pursuant to its operation of the airport. And so in that way could, um, uh, you know, arguably do some of the things that you're looking at with respect to how, uh, flights are managed, which again would address.
Okay, so I, I need to cut this off because I want to address this bill and we, HHS has another hearing five minutes ago.
But thank you for your questions.
So specifically for this bill on the private right of action, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, um, do we need to recess for decision making? Okay, so, um, so for the first bill, for HB, HB 415, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're gonna accept, um, that, we're gonna accept Disability Rights Council, um, disability, developmental disabilities request and DOT's request to basically add an DOT, sub- DOT instead of Department of Health. Any comments, questions, then put in, um, an effective date of upon approval. Any comments, questions and concerns? Same then Vice Chair for the vote passed with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Moriwaki.
Aye.
Senator Shima Kuro, excuse, Senator Awahai. Recommendation is adopted Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you TCA, uh, same recommendation.
Chair's recommendation to pass with amendments HB 415, House Draft 2 for the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Alafanti.
Aye.
Senator Keho Kaluli.
Aye.
And Senator Awahai. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So for, um, HB 794, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're gonna change the effective date to upon approval. No other amendments. Any comments, questions, concerns? Same then Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Four members are present, any reservations, any notes? Recommendation is adopted Chair.
Thank you TCA, same recommendation.
For the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, Chair's recommendation to pass HB 794, House Draft 1 with amendments. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Alafanti.
Aye.
Senator Keho Kaluli.
Aye.
And Senator Awahai. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So for HB 1201, Chair's recommend, oh, and Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We are going to remove, um, lines five through fourteen on page one. Renumber it and basically insert that any person who is agreed by a violation of the FAA and existing federal laws shall have a right of action and may bring a civil action against the owner, operator of the helicopter. And otherwise, and remove sections, uh, lines fifteen and sixteen of page two. We are going to change the effective date to June 30, 2050. Requires a lot of discussion, but, um, the Chair believes that the private citizen has a right as a private Attorney General to pursue and enforce existing laws. So that is my current recommendation. Any comments, questions, concerns? Same then Vice Chair for the vote. Chair votes aye.
Okay, four members are present, any reservations, any notes?
I have reservations.
Okay, thank you very much. Recommendation is adopted Chair.
Thank you TCA, same recommendation.
For the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts on HB 1201, passed with the amendments. Uh, with five members present, anyone voting with reservations, any no votes? Measure is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. We have adjourned.
Like good afternoon, we're convening the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts on our 3pm agenda here in Conference Room 224. Uh, we have a number of measures on the agenda today, so just ask everybody, everybody to make sure you have written testimonies submitted. Um, and for those who are wishing to testify, if you could, um, uh, please be concise, make sure that there's time to get through everybody this afternoon. Uh, that being said, up first is House Bill 541 relating to vehicle safety. Testifying first is the Department of Transportation. Thank you. Next is Natalie Iwasa. Uh, in support, that's all the testimony we have on 541. Oh, please come forward.
Aloha, Kaya K, Chair, Vice Chair and the TCA Committee, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. Um, so this is relating to, um, safety. And, um, we are in strong support and we're just gonna, um, provide comments to say, um, you know, this should be a safety precaution because, you know, they've got safety parameter, parameters about, um, both headlights has to be lit, right? Not just one. So it's a safety precaution because for people who are driving, not only for people who are driving, but for all the other people who are also driving on the roads. So when effective, um, safety parameters are implemented, it is for the welfare of everyone in the community. Because it could cause imminent harm or injury. And, um, so, um, we are in support of this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure this afternoon? If not, other questions? If not, all right, thank you everybody, let's move on to the next measure. HB 105 relating to license plates. Testifying first on 105 is the City County Honolulu. Department of Customer Services, opposition. Office of Plan Affairs in support. That's all the testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Angela Melody Young testifying, um, on behalf of CARES. Um, and we're just gonna testify in strong support. And, um, so this, um, HB 105 requires license plates to include the okina in the word Hawaii. And, um, someone once corrected me and told me that if there is no okina in the, in a Hawaiian word, it's very disrespectful to the Hawaiian culture. So, um, therefore, you know, because we live in Hawaii, um, we should respect the Hawaiian culture. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? If not, are there any questions? IT, City County is not online, is that right?
That is correct Chair.
Okay, okay, thank you. There's no questions, let's go on to the next measure, HB 478 relating to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. And testifying first on 478 is the State Foundation.
Good afternoon Chair Lee, members of the committee. I'm Karen Ewald, interim Executive Director for the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. Um, we stand on our written testimony and support, um, but I would like to clarify that while the bill says artist fellowships, the program we would launch would be cultural fellowships focusing on support for native Hawaiian artists and cultural practitioners. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Next is Sounding Joy Music Therapy Inc. in support. Hoi Arts Alliance in support. We have about seven or eight individuals in support. Nicole Naone, I believe is online. Good afternoon.
Hi. Can I testify? Is that what is happening?
Please go ahead.
Right on, okay. Aloha, my name is Nicole Naone, born and raised in Hawaii. I'm an artist and filmmaker, uh, speaking exclusively for myself as an individual with comments pertaining to HB 478. I was visiting a colleague of mine at the famed Spiral Art Gallery in Nobote Sando, Tokyo, Japan, when she expressed interest in coming to Hawaii as she had never yet been. Fast forward to us landing in Honolulu and I was excited to walk her to the part of the airport with works by Satoru Abe. I was excited to explain to her that one of the highlights of my entire career was, uh, meeting and showing with Satoru Abe. I was a bit caught off guard when she asked me where the Hawaiian artworks. She also asked why there was a Chinese garden in a Hawaiian airport. I was pretty stumped. Uh, she and I both found it interesting that I assumed a Japanese national would even want to see artworks by Japanese artists while in Hawaii. I realized then that of all the traveling I had done, uh, throughout the continental United States and the world at large, that I have never sought out Hawaiian art while in Italy or France or Japan or Korea or China. So I sort of wondered why I was seeking that in this specific case. Uh, this brought me to looking more into the Art in Public Spaces collection at Hawaii SFCA. What I learned was that it was first chaired by Masaru Panti Yokouchi and that of the 2,400 artists in the collection and of the 7,200 pieces, five Nisei Japanese artists, Satoru Abe, Isami Doi, Bambi Akai and Hari Tsukitana made up 3% of the entire APP collection. These five artists alone have more pieces in the state's art collection than all the other artworks by all other native Hawaiian artists combined, which as of 2020 made up approximately 2.6 of the entire collection. I am however excited to see that there seems to be attempts at inclusion of native Hawaiian artists in the SFCA, for example, per the 2022 annual report. Uh, it lists one of its values as we share in the responsibility perpetuate native Hawaiian culture in the arts. And it lists an increase of acquisition of works by arts, by native Hawaiian artists as an accomplishment that they made in 2022. Uh, this makes me hopeful for the future of SFCA, uh, that will be one that residents and tourists can enjoy.
Thank you very much. All right, is there, I believe that's the last testifier signed up. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Angela Melody Young testifying in strong support on behalf of CARES. Um, so about the SFCA Culture Fellowships, um, the Culture Fellowship aims to acknowledge a new generation of traditional artists and cultural practitioners whose work exemplifies a high level of expertise and dedication to their form of art or discipline and to recognize, honor and support the creative achievements, um, of renowned culture bearers of art forms vital to Hawaii's rich cultural heritage. Um, the State Foundation of the Culture and the Arts Fellowship, um, utilizes and accesses American Rescue Plan Act funding with support from the Hawaii State Legislature. Um, and the Culture Fellowship is for, um, active individual artists, for practitioners, um, and, um, it is a community, it is a project-based community impact arts and culture fellowship. Because art, art and art education is so necessary in our community, um, it reflects, um, traditions of, um, our, our culture. It is something that we should invest in, um, so therefore CARES supports it and yeah, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, anyone else wishing to testify in these measures? If not, other questions? Real quick for State Foundation. Uh, thanks, just, I think based on some of the last testimony, obviously I think there, there's an interest in making sure that we have native Hawaiian art represented. Beyond this program, are there other places within the State Foundation should this not pass that this can kind of be rectified?
Yeah, and actually, I, I want to speak to what, um, Mr. Cole said because, uh, she has very good points. Uh, the, the nature of, um, SFCA by design, um, has excluded native Hawaiian art in the past, um, by its construct. And because it was treated as crap. Now, we do have other programs in place, like Fulton Traditional Arts Program is NEA funded. We have, um, BLM Grants, uh, program, which we do funding of Hawaiian, um, communities or, um, organizations. But, um, but we have made a concerted effort, uh, to shift from solely Western perspective to break it down into, um, focusing on indigenous and, um, non-Western art. And, um, we just did a report on, um, it, it's true, we've been making a concerted effort to support native Hawaiian artists. And with this, with this, uh, fellowship program, we wanted to make that another effort as well. So our acquisition of native Hawaiian art has, yes, it, it, between 1967 and 2019, it was like 11%. Between 2020 to now, it's 76%. So we're really working hard at, at changing that. Now, it takes a real deep keel to make that happen and to, to change those, that infrastructure of the State Foundation. Um, but we're working really hard at that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks, aloha. That's, that's implausible, I think.
Yeah.
Fundamentally, you guys are a creature of the legislature, um, you have your own commission. I mean, where, where in that process between what leaves this building in terms of funding and, uh, shows up on walls everywhere or other places? Or is the decision-making made to focus on this area or not that? And just I guess historically, where, where is that decision made?
Usually, uh, it does take, in order to make those changes, we do need, um, you referenced the commissioners, we do need a board that is informed, experienced. And when we do try to make those changes, we do have really great commissioners that want to, that are on board with that effort. The ones that just, sometimes we have resistance as well, but, um, which can be a challenge. But we permit, uh, the acquisition of, of, it, it, the money that we spend, acquisitions do go through board approval. So, um, and it's, it just takes constant communication with them on, on making sure that happens.
Just the board, ultimately.
Yeah. But you know, the Executive Director works with the board on the strategic plan. We have a strategic plan, within that strategic plan currently is to, as, um, Nico referenced, focus on acquisition and support for native Hawaiian art, um, of all forms.
If the board goes along.
Yes, exactly. And we do need, for that matter, we need, uh, and we, we do have, and at times we haven't had commissioners that have that experience in the arts and culture sector to understand what that takes to get that done.
Thank you. Further questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone, let's move on to the next measure. HB 473 relating to State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. 473 testifying first, I imagine is the State Foundation. And it is indeed.
Just saying, um, we, uh, stand in, uh, strong support. Let's go, um, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Next is Sounding Joy Music Therapy Inc. in support. Hoi Arts Alliance in support. Honolulu Printmakers in support. An additional about eight individuals, nine individuals, all in support. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? Please come forward.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and the TCA Committee. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES in strong support. Um, so you know, art, it helps children with, um, development of motor skills, language, um, social, um, development, decision-making, risk-taking and inventiveness. Visual art, teach about color, layout, perspective and balance, um, you know, all techniques that are necessary in presentations, um, visual arts, digital. So, providing art and creative opportunities for artists is very necessary. And it looks like Governor Ige vetoed the funding from, um, the last year, the last season. So, um, because, you know, the art industry is growing in Hawaii. And there are a lot of artists who contribute to our communities. Um, they build workshops, uh, you know, they teach people about printmaking, those sorts of things. It is very necessary to support the artist efforts. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, all right, thank you. Um, any? If not, alright, thank you. Any questions? If not, alright, let's move on to the next measure. HB 899 relating to health, which designates the month of September as fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness month. Testifying first is the State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Thank you. Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support. Hawaii FASD Action Group in support. Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support. Robert Armstrong.
Alright Chair, they're currently not in Zoom.
Okay, thank you. In support, and we have an additional three individuals all in support on 899. Oh, excuse me, other five individuals on top of that, including one person who indicated they'd be here in person. Is there anyone in the room with us? Oh, good afternoon. Sure, let me take you first and then.
Sorry.
Sir, please, please go.
Hi. Ladies and gentlemen, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Darlene Chen Scoville. I'm a volunteer advocate for the children and families impacted by fetal alcohol spectrum disorders. I'm in strong support. I've been working on this, this population to be recognized. There are invisible disability. We have no data or information, or this is the disability that's really, really misunderstood. September is the ninth month of the year, which actually coincides with the nine month of pregnancy of a woman. The thing about it is that every woman has, do not have regular periods. So there's a lot of, a lot of unintended pregnancies that happens. Scientifically, is this, what is the FASD? Is Fetal Alcohol Syndrome? Fetal Alcohol Syndrome, Alcohol-related Neural Developmental Disorders. This is many, many conceptualized disabilities that encapsulated in this. The only challenge here is that I have no mothers that could come forward to, to fight for their children only because this is clouded by the stigma that I did this to my child. I've had some women that comes, I'm one of your mothers, why can't you join me? Only because they're gonna be ridiculed by their own families, the families of their husbands and their communities. I am standing before you to please pass this bill. What does it entail? If you pass this bill, we will be able, as a group of volunteers, to be able to track what are those informations scientifically and the social changes that we can create. My noble objective here, ladies and gentlemen, is to decrease babies born with fetal alcohol spectrum disorder in Hawaii. Please help me, help our community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, please come forward. She got to identify herself. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Chair, Senator Chrisley, and the rest of the members. Aloha. My name is Inamaki Adalramen Perera. I've been private practicing physician in Honolulu for the last 20 years, over 10 years. I'm submitting my testimony in support of HB 899 SD2. There are significant numbers of children in Hawaii suffering from fetal alcohol spectrum disorders, also abbreviated as FASD, due to exposure to alcohol before birth caused by consumption of alcohol by pregnant mothers. FASD can lead to mental behavior and physical problems, including attention deficit, memory disorders, small heart irritability, and heart and cardiac problems. FASD is much under diagnosed and frequently confused with the more popular attention deficit disorders because of the similarities of the, of the two diseases. Treatment for ADD is very different than FASD. FASD can be prevented by educating mothers to avoid alcohol during pregnancy. It can be 100% treated if they, if they avoid the alcohol. And so misdiagnosing FAD, FASD with the attention deficit disorder can lead to wrong treatment and may harm the child. Again, I respectfully submit that HB 899 SD2 should be passed and as September month. And, and I should be recognized as fetal alcohol syndrome disorder in this month. September should be recognized as that month. This will not only save our children from getting misdiagnosed and wrongly treated, but also will educate mothers to abstain from alcohol to prevent this devastating disease. It will also save state and taxpayers significant amount of money which is spent to monitor and treat our children and to send them to mainland for evaluation and treatment because there are not so many specialists in Hawaii who can, who can distribute or comfortable in diagnosing the FASD and treating it. Aloha.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? Please come forward.
Aloha. Chair, Vice Chair, and the TCA Committee, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES in strong support. So you know, Awareness Month is to help to bring education and awareness to illnesses or medical conditions. So that's why they have like National Suicide Prevention Month and also National Bullying Prevention Month in October. Right? To bring awareness, to draw awareness to these issues that really impact our communities. So you know, about this Fetal Alcohol Spectrum Disorder Awareness Month, this is something that is not recognized as much as it should be. So it is good to create awareness about it because it is a group of conditions that can affect a person. And it could include physical problems, problems with behavior and learning, or mix of these problems. And by bringing more awareness to it, it would also help treat the condition. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Alright, anybody else on this measure?
Can I have the doctor come back up, please? Yes. My question is related to, this measure is particularly with regards to fetal alcohol spectrum. What about all other drug-related defects and development disorders? And why I ask the question is because I know many friends that have adopted children who were born and because they were put out for adoption or taken out of a home atmosphere and have found that they are youngsters that are affected by all other drug-related as well. And it seems like the issues are the same. Now, so I was just wondering why we're only talking about the alcohol unless there's other measures that we pass into law to address the others?
Well, you are absolutely right. Drug is a major problem. I worked in the images room at YNICom and I saw what the drugs can do. The thing is that drug-related problems are well-known and a lot is being done and a lot can be done. I mean, if I go out of the subject, we need to revise our drug formulary by quest because a lot of drugs are not available and people keep coming back. The reason I support, I'm supporting the fetal alcohol syndrome disorder, spectrum disorder is because there's not much known about it. And we don't even have, it's not much known about it. Not many people know. And, and there's no data in Hawaii. The data is available in Montana and other states and they have done something about it. So the reason we want it to be recognized is, is that it will stimulate the diagnosis of the disease and hopefully there will be funding available in future by insurance companies to treat it properly. Because right now, many, many children with FASD are being treated as attention deficit diagnosis and they get amphetamine, you know, Adderall.
So are there programs out there?
And that is harmful for the children.
So are there programs out there that addresses?
In other states, yes.
And in drug-related in Hawaii?
Yes, well, we all know that there's a.
Okay, so there's data.
If you, if you ask me as a physician, if they are sufficient enough, I will say no. There, there's none to be done.
And the reason I ask is because I have seen children from birth to now who are even attending public schools and private schools. Who has some with improvements and some, I think the impact was more prevalent on those that were heavily drugged parents.
Exactly. Well, unfortunately, you know, the drug-related problems and alcohol-related problems, they can prevent it, as I mentioned. If the mother abstained from alcohol during the pregnancy, which is much easier than get abstaining from the drugs.
I understand.
Drugs are highly addictive and the program has to be very extensive. And this one is the start of the thing. Just to recognize the disease, put it, put September as a month for the disease so that the public will know, legislature will know, the governors will know, you know, the doctors will know, healthcare providers, that's all.
Thank you, and we appreciate your attendance because we all get educated every day and we learn something as well.
Thank you for giving the opportunity.
Okay.
Just one follow-up. You have a house lapel. Are you, are you in the building?
I'm sorry?
You're, not a lapel, sorry, lanyard. But you're wearing it.
Oh, I work as a legislative aide for Representative Jamuzano.
Oh.
I volunteer for him.
Understood.
Yeah, I've been working for many years on the bill, healthcare bills. And then I worked on five or six bills, including this one too.
Are you there this year?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the last measure on the agenda. House Bill 340 relating to Brother Joseph Dutton Day. Testifying first is Department of Accounting and General Services. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. On behalf of Comptroller Regan, I am Dr. Adam Jensen. I have the privilege to serve in as State Archivist and Administrator of the Public Archives.
With two hats.
Thank you. As keepers of public memory, we think it is very important to keep alive the memories of those individuals and events that have shaped Hawaii's history and should never fade from memory. Brother Joseph Dutton, I think, is, is one of those individuals. He spent 44 years caring for the patients at Kalopapa. And while we strive to be the keepers of public memory in general, we are very specifically the keeper of Brother Dutton's memory with the hundreds of pages of manuscript material that is in the public archives. So we know intimately what his thoughts were and what he did. And we would like to help honor that individual and, and make all of these resources available so that the school systems have an opportunity to further educate the keiki of these things in the past and hold up individuals worthy of remembrance. I appreciate the testimony and can, I, I stand available to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. We also have testimony from the Joseph Dutton Guild in support. Congregation of Sacred Hearts in support, and five other individuals. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure? Please come forward.
Aloha. Chair, Vice Chair, and the TCA Committee, Angela Melody Young testifying in strong support on behalf of CARES. So Brother Joseph Dutton was, he oversaw distillery in Alabama and, before working in Memphis on the railroads. And then he joined the War Department Settling Claims. And he was a solid citizen. And when he fell away from religion during the war, he became a Catholic because of his Catholic friends. And also, it looks like Brother Dutton helped Father Damien. He knew that it was his calling to serve and to help and care for the sick and suffering. And so therefore we support this measure. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Alright, anyone else on this measure? If not, other questions? Alright, if not, thank you. Recess for decision-making. Recess. Alright, good afternoon. We're reconvening the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts for decision-making on our 3pm agenda here in Conference Room 224. Up first is HB 541 relating to vehicle safety. I'll note that we did have a proposed SD on the agenda here. We'd like to recommend passing this with amendments. So it'll be adopting the proposed House draft, but making amendments to that based on conversations with DOT. So what we'll do is we'll ensure that folks are allowed to go in and get their safety check and their registration. But it'll be in that order. So you'd be authorized to go and get your safety check first and then registration, not the reverse, which was what the proposed HD had contemplated. And we'll retain a defective date on the measure. So any discussion on that?
Yeah. Does this make it so that if you, you don't have to do the, that extra step?
Okay. Nothing else? Vice Chair?
Chair's recommendation on HB 541, House Draft 1, to pass with amendments with five members present. Is there anyone voting with reservations? Any no votes? Hearing none, Vice Chair, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HB 105 relating to license plates. Similarly, we had a proposed draft here. So I think it should be to pass this with some amendments. Oh, excuse me, no, this one, we're just, we're just adopting the proposed Senate draft. So this is the Senate position on a bill that will be passed earlier out of this committee. So we'll just adopt the proposed Senate draft. So it'll be passing HB 105 with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair?
Chair's recommendation to pass with amendments HB 105, House Draft 2, with five members present. Anyone voting with reservations? Any no votes? Hearing none, Vice Chair, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Move on to HB.
Chair, I'm sorry.
HB, I'll be whatever you want me to be. HB 478, HD1 relating to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. We'd like to move this forward with some amendments. We'll note the discussion, based on the discussion, we'd like to move the bill, which I think is laudable and has the intent of helping to promote additional opportunities for local artists, particularly focusing on native Hawaiian art, which I think for, just clearly demonstrated to have had a tumultuous history going back. But we'd also like to take an additional step here and address, I think, what had come up as the underlying sort of core issue, which is the actual decision-making matrix within the State Foundation and what's being focused on. So we'd like to create criteria, basic criteria for commission members as they're appointed, as there doesn't seem to be any criteria that exists currently. So we'd like to reflect some of the criteria that currently applies to the Executive Director, which is be a person who by reason of education or extensive experience is generally recognized as having demonstrated accomplishment or expertise in the fields of culture, arts, history, and humanities. Secondly, be familiar with the people and cultures of Hawaii. And just to apply to the commission as a whole, we'd like to have at least one member who has a history and background in, or familiarity with the needs of public education, neighbor island communities, native Hawaiian culture and diversity, and urban design and public architecture. I think hopefully this can help round out the board and provide some guidance and hopefully not, and of course correction, I think, to help complement, I think, what this intended this bill is. So any discussion on this?
So that would mean that with, with the additional person and the ability to fill a slot that's badly needed. So that won't occur until next year. So, so are we increasing then the number of commission members, I guess?
We just.
Or we're just making sure that?
Any future appointments?
In the future. In the future, okay.
I'll note, actually, this committee has the opportunity to confirm at least several current nominees.
Exactly.
So we can ask those questions of those nominees in a few days.
Good, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Chair's recommendation on HB four seven eight, House Draft one, to pass with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations and any no votes. Hearing none, Vice Chair, motion is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to HB four seven three relating to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair?
Chair's recommendation on HB four seven three, House Draft one, is to pass unamended with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Hearing none, Vice Chair, Chair Lee, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next measure, HB eight nine nine relating to health. Recommendation is to pass as is. And for the folks who took the time and the audience on this one, this would mean this bill goes straight to the governor. So appreciate your advocacy over the many, many years this has come up. Look forward to a discussion and hopefully some other solutions.
Chair's recommendation on HB eight eight nine, House Draft two, is to pass unamended with five members present, any voting with reservations and any no votes. Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Moving on to the last measure on the agenda, HB three forty relating to Brother Joseph Dutton Day. Recommendation is to pass as is.
Okay, to that agenda, Chair's recommendation is to pass HB three four zero, House Draft two, unamended, with five members present, any voting with reservations, any no votes. Okay, hearing none, and Chair, your measure is adopted.
Thank you. So for the audience, we do have a deferred decision-making agenda on bills that we have heard previously, so we're going to, for IT, we're going to gavel out and gavel right back in. Does that mean we need to break, or can we just keep it going?
You could, you could just roll through them, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So we'll gavel out and gavel into our final agenda of the day. Right here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we're convening the Committee on Transportation and Culture in the Arts on our three P M deferred agenda. And we have two bills. First is HB seven one four relating to mooring lines. We'd like to recommend moving this bill forward. I'll note it has a defective date. We'll move it as is with that defective date. I'll just note for the record, there have been a number of issues raised by some of the stakeholders in testimony, which could have some impacts here that we'd like to sort out. You know, the stakeholders are talking with various labor organizations. We'd like to give them opportunity to try and come up with some consensus language here. We'll note this goes on to the Ways and Means Committee, so there is some time. So we'll keep that defective date on there and keep it as a work in progress.
Does your recommendation include the PUC's comments?
They're one of the stakeholders, so we'll see if everybody can come into line. Okay.
Chair's recommendation on HB seven four one, House Draft one, is to pass unamended.
Seven one four.
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay.
They got it wrong.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right, I'll just make that change, sorry. Seven one four. Okay, stand corrected. Chair's recommendation to pass HB seven one four, House Draft one, as is. I think, Chair, I'll read out the names of the committee's votes. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Okay, Vice Chair goes aye. Senator Alafanti.
Aye with reservations.
Senator Keo Ho Kaloli.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Moving on to the last measure, HB six forty relating to insurance. This is the peer-to-peer bill. We'd like to move this forward, making a couple amendments. This goes on to the Consumer Protection Committee. For this particular measure, which we had a similar one earlier in the session, we'd like to reflect that. So the amendments, we'd want to allow counties, who had raised some concerns, to address issues of public safety and other public concerns for peer-to-peer companies whose insurance provisions fall below a blank amount at any given time. And then secondly, add in a two-year sunset, July one, twenty twenty-five. Keep the measure going. Any discussion there?
Chair's recommendation on HB six four zero, House Draft one, to pass with amendments with five members present, any voting with reservations and any no votes. Hearing none, measure is adopted, Chair?
All right, thank you very much. And we are adjourned.